Oh, we can start with Roll Cops.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
And Barb Stackhausen?
Here.
And I guess I should technically say that this is Tuesday, the July 23rd, 2013, council meeting, so the backflip's on the record. If you notice in front of you, by the way, you have an amended agenda, so that's the one you'll want to be looking at, not the one that's on your computer. Couple of items that have been added. Under consideration, the consent calendar, and then on the back page, a library block redevelopment feasibility study, so we will get to those later. But the first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding ordinance 1313, amending the official zoning map. Joe?
Yeah, this is regarding the property that's located behind Menards and Walmart. It's Lot 7 of Keystone Development. And when that development was first initially planned, they did a kind of a generic zoning of that property, identifying areas that they wanted to be commercial, which areas they wanted to be residential. And they kind of did a guesstimate of approximately where the residential portion would be located. Later on, when they did the final design and did the plating and located the streets, there was this parcel that was left, even though it was intended to be residential from the design, it actually was partially zoned B3 highway business and partially zoned R3 multifamily residential. So now they're coming through to do the subdivision of that lot for residential purposes. So to clean up the zoning, they're requesting to change the zoning of that entire lot to R3 multifamily residential, which would match the boundaries of the proposed residential development and kind of clean up the two zoning districts that are present on that property now. So that's the proposal, and it was actually a condition of the preliminary plat approval for that lot, that the zoning be amended prior to approval of the final plat. So this will take care of that condition as well. Staff does recommend approval of the change of the zoning of Lot 7 to R3 multifamily residential. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Why you changing the zoning to R3? I thought the applicant wanted to have duplexes built on these lots.
Correct.
Duplexes allowable underneath R2.
And R3. R3 allows single-family duplex or multifamily residential.
Well, the R2 would also allow, what's our, if you adopt R2, that also adopts R1, correct?
Correct.
So if you did R2, then you could do the duplexes. So in other words, we're talking about something that's more than a duplex.
The R3 would allow something more than a duplex.
That's right.
Yes.
But I thought I read in previous memos that you were talking about doing duplexes.
That is the proposal that's coming for you later, is to do a duplex development, a subdivision that would allow duplexes. Like I said, the R3 zoning is basically the main zoning that's already on that property. We're basically just getting rid of the B3 highway business.
B3.
That is also part of that. So it's more consistent with what the current zoning for that property is to keep it R3.
Well, that's true, but I bring it up because we're trying to encourage more single-family homes, and I thought this was the one that we're going, it was encouraging single-family homes and duplexes, and so if we should go to R3, then that's not going to be encouraging single-family homes and duplexes.
That's the one to the west.
Well, that's already there.
No, it's where they've built the house.
Do I have that correct?
That's over here.
Yes, I know about that.
This is what we're talking about.
That's, I know about that. Is it correct that duplexes were proposed for this lot?
Yes, if the applicant, the applicant is here, and would, this would be an opportunity for the applicant to also make a statement.
Do I need to fill out a green card?
No, we actually added it to our agenda.
Okay.
Well, good.
Yeah, originally, that's, the thought was, was single-family duplex and multifamily. In the original, in the original plating of that, when we did the entire development, we talked to the council and said, "This is where we think things are going to go." And the council said, "Okay, we're going to make sure there's a swath of residential there at that time." This is clearing it up. R3 does give a little more flexibility, even though that may not be the intent, and I'm not even sure R3 would, would work well in those, in that particular area. It is R3 now, R3 in a slice of the highway business. So I don't think the intent is going to change, but it does allow flexibility there.
But I thought, am I incorrect? I thought I read it, that you wanted to make this eight lots into single-family and duplex.
That's the thought.
But now there's no discussion about single-family duplex.
Well, there's still, still, I think it's even further down in this agenda, if I'm not mistaken, is, is the discussion of subdividing Lot 7 into eight separate lots. Which, which leads to the intent of duplexes. Still, if it's zoned R3, it gives you the ability to do, if you were, someone wanted to combine and make, maybe make row houses or something like that. I don't, I don't anticipate that that's going to be what happens.
But you see my point? My point was trying to encourage single-family duplexes.
Well, here again, the original intent was single-family and then multifamily, and, and so, yeah, it's, the, the, in all probability, or in all, it's likely that it'll end up being duplexes in that area. As Joe mentioned, it originally, you folks in the council, or the council at that time, said, "Okay, we're going to make sure that we start out with that," and it was zoned R3. So, the intent isn't, or the thought is not to do that. I don't believe that, that R3 would work there. The intent is to do exactly what you're saying, is the duplexes. However, you know, if it is R3, that just gives the potential for something else. I don't anticipate that happening by any stretch.
Okay.
We do not have anyone who has recorded to speak in favor, against, or in general regarding this particular public hearing, so it will be time for council discussion. Are there any other questions or comments from the council regarding this amendment, or amending the official map?
Nope. I move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, and we'll vote.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion on the request?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1313. Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our next item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. The first is the minutes of the 7:0213 special council meeting and the 7:0913 regular council meeting, and you have on your desk tonight a different version of the minutes because some information was missing in the draft that was put in our packet originally. So Jan, if you want to point out to the council members, please, what's different?
Yes, on the July 9th meeting minutes, there wasn't anything after closed session. It was all open, so finish the minutes for that. So I got the information. That's the only change.
Okay, so information on the closed session that was not completed in the, in the information that was originally in our packet, correct?
Correct.
All right. So just that note to the council members, so that you have a chance to look at that, at the very bottom of the second page.
So page three of four and four of four. Motion to approve the consent calendar is presented.
Uh, sorry, just because I didn't finish, and I need to appoint somebody.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So, the second item is payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. I'm appointing Robin Klein this evening to the planning commission. And then licenses, there's a list of one- or two-year operators' licenses included in your packet. And again, the other thing is the street closing permit, which was added after the original agenda was sent out, and that's for a annual division street block party on July 31st. So now, is there a motion to?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
We'll vote.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, and please let me hear comments to five minutes, or less. Michael Mayo, first.
My comments tonight are going to be rather, well, I know where they're going, but I put them out to the council. Why is the council not identifying why we are not saying the pledge to the flag? I know it's important to me and to many other people, but yet the council has yet failed to give anyone a reason why. And why is there no answer from the city council with regard of they're still harassing senior citizens about their property? Many seniors don't have the monies, and yet they're still getting orders from the city, and yet the city council hasn't done anything about it. No comments, right? And why was no elected official present at the return of the 229? Nor were they on their departure? Why does not the city council want to be representative when we had our governor there? Our state assemblyman there? And yet not one person from the city council, there's seven of you, not one of you, had the time to go there, especially when the 229 is located in our town? Can anybody give me any answers to that?
I was 400 miles away.
Thank you. There's six more.
Michael, please complete your comments. As I've explained to you, and you're well aware, because you speak to us often, this is not a time for discussion, it's time for you to make your comments.
No, it's a time for the citizens of the city of Platteville to get answers. I see, I've gotten them.
Next for a citizen concern is Jason Klovning. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Jason.
Go ahead.
If you could give your, your name for the record, and then an address, please.
My first name is Jason, J-A-S, and my last name is Klovning, K-L-O-V-N-I-N-G. I live at 127 Pine Grove here in Platteville. I've been here about two years. I'm one of the general surgeons at the local hospital, and I'm going to try and be brief, and I'm sorry. I own a 1959 Piper Comanche single-engine aircraft, a hangar at it out the airport. I currently rent one of the city hangars. I'm a licensed FAA medical examiner as well, so I give the physicals to the pilots. I want to build a 50 by 56-foot hangar at the airport that's heated, so that I don't have to deal with the cold in the middle of winter. To that end, on June 6th of this year, I provided a proposal from Cleary Building Corporation to the Platteville Airport Commission. Their next scheduled meeting was the 10th, so four days later. I didn't get to attend that meeting, because I'm a physician, sometimes I can't make these things. And I was not told of any issue or any problem arising from that meeting. From what I understand, it was discussed. I cannot find the minutes online. I don't have, they're not there, as far as I can find on, on the internet. I was invited to attend the meeting, the next one, on the 8th of this month, six hours prior to it commencing. I was told at that time color would be an issue. Apparently, the color had been discussed at this press, press meeting, and nobody bothered to let me know. I inquired as to when a taxiway could be constructed to gain access to the hangar. Just as you can't build your own city street, you can't build your own taxiway, even if you want to. So I can't use the facility until I have access. It's useless until I have this. When I, when I asked if I could place a temporary gravel taxiway, the members of the board thought that would be okay and discussed it, but no formal motion, no approval was made. They described no plot size for the actual hangar, they described no control point, elevation, or any other surface for where I could get a survey done, or where I could put this building, or the temporary taxiway that I would need to construct it. Also, at this point, I had no land lease, and I had no idea where I was going to be able to put my holding tank for sewer services. I had proposed to them a red building with white trim and a gray-black roof. If you think for just a second, you'll realize there are literally thousands of red barns with gray-black roofs and white trim that dot the countryside in Wisconsin. So I don't exactly understand why they had a problem with my color scheme, as it's a prevalent item throughout the state, but they passed a motion formally denying my color. I was at this meeting, and I asked them, "What color can I have?" And they told me a neutral color. When I asked them to define a color palette or give me a color so that I could proceed with building, they did not. I have submitted to this point three additional colors to the board, and they have not approved one of them yet. So since I contacted some members of the board, and they told me to come speak to you guys, I have circumvented the airport commission and discussed this directly with Larry Burkey. He's been immensely helpful, I want to publicly thank him. He has gotten me in touch with the people from Mead and Hunt, who do the surveying for the airport. They've gotten me a control point and a distance and a bearing and an elevation, so that I know where the foundation would go. I've been able to pass that along to my contractor, I've made some progress as far as this goes, so that I can hopefully get the building, I've got the nuts and bolts done. Now all I need is the color. And I understand the airport commission can control decor all they want. I understand that you don't want to have a fuchsia building and a hot pink and a blaze orange, but there are no standards. There's no written rules. The city main hangar, and I have some pictures for you, this is one of the city, one of the hangars the city owns. It's a mauve pink color. This is the lime-green one next to it. This is the main hangar, which is an olive drab color. Yet red, red is an eyesore. So if there is no standard out there right now, I don't quite understand by fiat why six members of the community who are unelected get to decide what color I get. My hometown is Menominee, Wisconsin. There, you just get white. It's by city ordinance, it's in the ordinance, it's all you get. Boyceville, similarly, white and blue, that's it. There's no decision, there's no color. It makes a standard, it makes it, it makes it pat. One of my other problems is, two years from now, most of these members are no longer going to be on the committee, so somebody could come behind me and build exactly what I want. Just because you have different people and a different decision. So it's kind of capricious, the, the system for doing this is somewhat unfair. Literally, they control the airport completely, the board does. They could tell me I need a tiki bar in the middle of my hangar, and there's nothing I could do about it. There, there's no way that I can appeal their decision, there's no way for me to get any, any process, other than just waiting or going to Middle Point, Iowa County, and building it there. That's my only other option. So I would ask the board to consider two things. I would amend city ordinance 3.15 and take color away from them as a decision point, because obviously they're having difficulty with having that as part of their power. They don't know how to do it. It's either through apathy or through, through, they just don't, I don't know what. But amend that and just make a standard. If you want a standard, if you want a color, pick one. And just put it in writing. Number two, I would ask that you consider putting an appeals process in, so that if you have someone that's in my position and you can't, I can't force these people to do anything. They're, they're not elected, they're not beholden to anybody. The only person that's elected is, is the, is the board president, and that's it. So I have no recourse. I would, I would ask that you consider putting that somewhere in 3.15 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Christiansen, All-American City.
I live at 10 South Third Street, Apartment 4, here in Platteville. I was just wondering if at this time, Eileen, you wanted to repeat the announcement that you made two weeks ago concerning the gathering two days from now on this topic?
Uh, there's going to be a reception, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, if you wanted to.
There's going to be a reception at 4:30 here in the council chambers to thank those who donated to assist for going to the All-American City competition. And public is invited.
It seems the city and the common council is still trying to spin the All-American City competition, and it's something that it is not. My guess is that the city manager and members of the common council want more three-day paid holidays next year. These vacations are paid for using taxpayer dollars and other public slash private dollars. It is my understanding that 13 people from Platteville went to Denver, Colorado, and received a plaque for being a finalist in the competition. The city of Dubuque was named an All-American City at the competition, and they received a plaque. Actually, this was the third time in the last seven years for Dubuque, so I guess they now have three plaques. The common council knew, or should have known immediately, that there were no real benefits for the city of Platteville in entering this competition. The common council went ahead and approved the funding anyway. The real beneficiaries are, one, the airlines, two, Denver, Colorado, from the 500 to 600 visitors, and three, whatever organization set up the All-American City competition. These three were more than happy to take Platteville's money. It is my understanding that about half the funding came directly from taxpayer dollars. The other half came from what the city manager and the common council is calling sponsors. Those were public slash private dollars that could have and should have been used to benefit the city. Instead, those dollars were used for three-day paid holidays. Perhaps some of these sponsors didn't know how their contributions were going to be used. I'm concerned perhaps that some of these sponsors did know and felt they had to contribute to the city managers and the common council's vacations, so that they might receive favorable treatment in the future. And let's not forget the time spent by the city manager and other city employees securing, preparing for, and attending the All-American City competition. In other words, time spent preparing for vacations. The time spent on this was time taken away from work that benefits the city and from the jobs they were hired to do. I'm very disappointed in the common council. Yes, I guess the city manager proposed it, but it was the common council that approved it. What they did was vote to give themselves a three, three-day paid holidays using taxpayer dollars. I'm disappointed by how much money the common council wastes. Thank you.
Thank you.
One comment, sir. You kind of insult me to our intelligence with that statement, that letter you read, because I, for one, I donated money. And yes, I'm one of them that went.
Did I say something that was inaccurate?
Yeah, you said, you was telling us where this money went. I know where my money went.
I said, uh, let's see, where is it?
Was you there?
Some of these sponsors did know where their money went.
All the sponsors did.
That's fine.
Now, I don't see what your beef is.
Using taxpayer dollars for three-day holidays.
Oh, we were on vacation, huh? Were you there? There was 13 of us, sir. We worked our butts off out there.
For what benefit? For what city benefit?
For our own benefit.
That's what I'm getting at, that these taxpayer dollars benefited you.
I understand, Dick, that you would like to comment, but in fairness, I think that we need to, you know, move on.
Well, we get so much stuff up here that's half-truth.
Thank you.
Michael, point of order is not going to be recognized. Michael, thank you. You know, there is some good news this evening that I would like to announce.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Michael, if, you know, Michael, you can.
You will see that the rules that I've just stated overrules anything and cannot be contested.
Michael, please.
Answers to a gentleman who, with the right question of the council.
Shut her down.
And yet, when I ask a question of a council, I'm told, it's not, I can't handle. Why?
It's really unfortunate we have to go through this, Michael.
It's very unfortunate when all our councils.
We're going to take.
I don't think it took me five minutes to read one single page.
I'm not going to have a discussion, so, okay, go ahead. If you'd like to make one final comment, go ahead.
Yes, I think I'm just entitled to express my, you know, disappointment in the council voting this way to, to fund this, and I don't think I should be attacked by the council for, you know, expressing my disappointment in that, that vote.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The good news.
Are we through with the comments from citizens?
I actually have one announcement to make. I've been asked to make this announcement.
I'd like to make a comment after.
You'd like to make a comment as well? Okay, good. Jeff Haas has asked that I pass along that the Platteville, the PD will be hosting a community event called National Night Out on August 6th, 2013, from 6:00 until 8:15 p.m. We will be starting a safety walk from city park and ending at the pool. Full admission for those who walk in the safety walk will be $1 on that night, and there will be a live DJ until 8:15 p.m., when the pool closes. So if you have time on August 6th for a National Night Out, it sounds like a lot of fun, and we invite you to participate. Ken, you have something?
Yes, I'd like to ask the staff, or make the comment that I, I think we owe the person as far as airport hangar, an answer, and the council needs to have an answer to this, so could we have something to us at the latest by the next meeting? It'd be Howard.
The airport commission meets again on August 12th.
Well, that's after our next meeting?
Yes. Actually, our next meeting is the 13th.
13.
Okay.
If you'd like, we could bring something back as a result of the airport commission meeting.
And, and also, I've talked with the president about another thing that came in. It was something from Dr. Robert Smith, parking on Calhoun Drive, and I'd like to have something done about that, as far as what the action might be. We talked about that.
Right, we should discuss that at the next agenda meeting, probably.
Information and discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anybody have anything else from the council that you would like to add? All right, we don't have any other citizens' comments. We're going to, there are reports in your packet, committee reports. Ron Tree Gallery Board, Stackhausen, anything to add?
I think you have something in.
Yeah, the minutes are in the packet, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't.
Okay. Water and Sewer Commission, Steiner, Killian, and Bonin, anything to add?
No.
No addition.
Aforeheads Committee, Steiner?
Nothing to add.
Parks, Forestry and Recreation, Killian?
No addition.
Other reports in the packet include the city manager's quarterly staffing report, building inspection report, and department progress reports. Any questions or comments on any of those from any of the council people? All right. Then we're going on to the first item on the action agenda is ordinance 1314, amending the official traffic map. No parking this side of street on Furnace Street, and you do have on, again, on your desk, a letter that was received relative to this issue, so I'll have Howard start with the presentation, and then I'm sure he'll mention the letter as well.
Correct. Thank you. Staff recommends a change to install no parking this side of street on both sides of East Furnace Street between Lutheran Street and Broadway. The street is 24 feet wide, face of curb to face of curb. It is too narrow for parking. It came up because with the Broadway Reconstruction Park project, people were looking for alternative on-street parking near the churches in the area. With no signs, people were parking in this block and causing traffic congestion. This was overlooked during the last reconstruction in 97. We've done some research, and there's been, there's no record of any signs that may have been authorized. Now, as Council President Nichols mentioned, this morning I received a letter from St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church there at the corner of Broadway and East Furnace Street. Mr. Mueller is chairman, he signed this letter, and he's proposing that parking be eliminated on one side only, and that traffic in opposing directions share the roadway and take turns using a single lane available. And because he's saying that. And because he's saying that the parking is used on Sundays and a few other holidays or other special events during the year, he believes that there may not be a need to eliminate all parking for this, on this block.
Any questions? Comments?
My comment, one, I view this as a temporary problem during construction. I don't like to see the parking removed for these people. I think we can live with it for this short duration, duration, I should say, so I do not intend to vote for this change.
I agree with that, Ken. I think this is just a one-time deal. Maybe it's twice now with the construction, but there's no reason to take away part of parking up there.
Yeah, I too agree with Ken and Mike. I had that opinion before I read Mr. Mueller's letter. He points out that for twenty years, it really hasn't been a problem, and it's probably only on Sundays where it might be an issue, but again, it's only for a few hours. I live in that neighborhood, or I travel that quite a bit, and I've never, I know it's a narrow street, but I'm not aware really of any parking issues, and again, with the construction, it's a very temporary thing. So, no, I wouldn't agree. I can agree to maybe one side, no parking, but not both.
Have you heard from the other church on Furnace?
We have not.
They haven't said anything?
No.
They have a parking lot.
I'm not sure. I'd have to look to see if I'd sent them a letter as well. I think I did, but I...
I think you did.
Yeah, that's right. But I have not heard from them.
Well, I almost think they're in, have a more difficult time than this church, because they have very limited off-street parking, where this church has Broadway yet to park if required.
Doesn't that other one have off-street parking?
But not as much as this one does.
And Furnace Street between Lutheran and Water Street is no parking? So, it's just this one block of Furnace Street that allows parking?
You're correct.
Oh, is there a motion?
Both sides.
As a result of this discussion? The staff report would suggest no parking at all on Furnace Street in that section, so...
And is there currently no parking on one side of the street, or there, it's, parking's allowed on both sides of the street right now?
There are...
Without the temporary signs?
There is parking allowed on both sides of the street under the current ordinances.
All the way, oh, pardon me.
For, for just that one block. There is no parking allowed on either side of the street from Lutheran Street West.
So, Howard, that's, that one side of Furnace Street that we're talking about, now is just that sign, it's temporarily up there because of construction, is that why it says parking on only one side on that little block we're talking about? Because didn't, isn't there a sign up there for the construction area?
There's a, I believe there is a sign for the construction, but that's, that's only...
That's just a temporary.
That's only temporary. I don't have authority to make it permanent. Only you folks have that authority.
Well, can't we go and see the, this Mr. Mueller is suggesting that parking be eliminated on one side? Now, that's coming from the people at the church. I think we could, should be able to try and go along with what their suggestion is, see if that works.
Is that a motion?
Oh, I'm just talking.
Okay.
Because we've got other opinions.
Well, I make that a motion. I make a mo, and I don't know how you reword the ordinance, but instead of install signs designating no parking on both the north and south side of the streets, I make a motion, we install signs designating no parking only on the north side of East Furnace between Lutheran and Broadway.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
I, I would further indicate that if staff believes after they look at it, since I'm not there to look at it, that it really, it should be one side or the other, and I'm thinking that on the north side of the street, there's an entry to a parking lot and an old school, and I can't remember how, why that entry is. And I'm thinking on the south side, there's a home, or maybe two, and so I think it would be more appropriate to post the north side than the south side.
Okay.
There's also some driveways on the south side.
Yeah. Staff should look at that, so...
I think there's two on the south side, but I'd have to look. I understand the intent.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Can I comment? There's also, on that Furnace side, there's also handicapped entryway to that church. Do you want to change to put some designated handicap parking there?
I think so.
Is that handicap parking or drop-off?
Right, they would have a drop-off, so...
Okay, fine. That was just discussion.
Okay, we'll vote.
And just so I'm clear on this, will this be published as an ordinance, just with that change, taking the "and" south out of the ordinance, with the ordinance vote to go?
Mm-hmm. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is the 2013 Tax Increment District Changes, and the first is the Amendment Number Two to the Tax Incremental Finance District Number Seven and Redevelopment Project Area. And actually, again, we have something on our desk from Joe. It's Resolution Number 201329, if you want to take a look at that. And Joe, if you could explain how the separate changes need to be made.
Okay. Basically, you've got five resolutions to consider this evening. Four of them are to make amendments to the fourth TIF districts, to number four, to number five, to number six, and to number seven. Six and seven include boundary amendments as well as project plan amendments. Four and five would just include project plan amendments. The fifth resolution, thirteen dash twenty-nine, is to amend the redevelopment area number one boundaries so that it matches the boundaries of TID number seven as proposed to be amended. That was the way it was set up initially when the redevelopment authority was formed. There was a boundary that kind of identified the area that they were going to be active in, and it was created at the same time TID number seven was created, so the boundaries of TID number seven and redevelopment area number one were maintained to be the same. So, since we're changing or proposing to change TID number seven boundaries, we're also proposing to change the redevelopment area authority boundary number one so that it maintains that consistency. So, that would be thirteen twenty-nine. And it also, both of the resolutions make reference to the project plan. Essentially, they're both sharing the same project plan as far as the goals and the projects that they would like to see happen within the downtown area. So, the proposal is the boundaries would maintain consistency, they'd both change the same, and then the project plan would be used for both of them. Otherwise, you know, I think we've discussed the actual proposed amendments to the districts. You know, the council's been involved in those discussions. The Plan Commission did consider those amendments, and they did recommend approval. The redevelopment authority recommended approval of the changes to TID number seven as well as the boundary change to redevelopment area number one. After the council acts on it, then it will go to the Joint Review Board, which brings the other taxing entities into it, and they will have final vote on the TIF district amendments. They do not have to approve the boundary amendments for redevelopment area number one, since they're not involved in that, that's not a TIF district entity by itself. So, that meeting will be Monday at four o'clock. But we've discussed all these changes kind of at the same time, and we can continue to do that, but as far as the actual motions, we would need to vote on each resolution separately.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions at this point about any of the TIF districts? As Joe said, we've discussed them at quite a few meetings. Any questions, anyone?
Council President, you want a motion on each of the resolutions, starting with number thirteen twenty-five for tax increment district number four, project plan amendment number two?
I think we have to do them each separately, so yes, each, each one would be separate.
And I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number thirteen twenty-five, approving tax increment finance district number four's project plan amendment number two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number thirteen twenty-six, approving tax increment finance district number five's project plan amendment number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll vote. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move to approve Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty-seven, approving tax increment finance district number six, project plan amendment number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion on thirteen, Resolution thirteen twenty-eight, that we accept the approved tax amendment increment finance district number seven, with the exception of the, leaving the Swiss Valley out of it. I don't think that's a property that we want to have be involved in TIF number seven.
Second to the motion.
Clarification?
All right, yes.
Swiss Valley property is not proposed to be included in TIF district number seven.
I thought those were the two additions that were in there. The one was, there are two properties that you were going to add to that.
That was TIF district number six.
It was. Then I stand corrected, I apologize.
All right, so...
I'll withdraw my motion, as stated, and I'll make a motion to the Resolution thirteen twenty-eight that we approve the tax increment finance district number seven.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution thirteen twenty-nine, boundary and plan amendment to redevelopment project area number one, the blighted area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll vote. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Lot of effort on that. Final plat, Lot Seven Keystone subdivision is the next item, and this would be Joe.
Okay, this is the same property we just talked about earlier on the public hearing, Lot Seven Keystone subdivision. It is behind Walmart Menards. The plan, as we discussed earlier, was to re-divide this property to allow for the construction of, the developers currently proposing duplex development on that lot. Basically, it would take the existing parcel, divide it into eight parcels. Each lot would be suitable for duplex construction, meaning that it has enough lot frontage and lot area to allow for that. The zoning would allow for that. The proposed lots do meet all the zoning and subdivision requirements as far as lot size and frontage and so forth. All of the infrastructure isn't already in place for this development. There are easements that accommodate the existing utilities. The preliminary plat was already approved by the Plan Commission and Council. The Plan Commission has recommended approval of the final plat. The only condition that I mentioned before was that the zoning of this lot be amended so that it has consistent zoning on all of it, so it doesn't have the split zoning that you just did this evening, so that condition has been met. So, staff would recommend approval of the final plat for Lot Seven of Keystone Subdivision. Any questions?
Any questions?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the final plat, Lot Seven Keystone subdivision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D is a planned unit development amendment for fourteen fifteen Evergreen Road. And Joe, I think this is yours again.
Yeah, this property was purchased back in two thousand and six by Wayne Vosberg. He located the Vosberg Bomatic business on that site and did some remodeling of the property, improvement of the buildings, and a few years later, back in about two thousand and ten, he realized that he basically had more space than he needed to for his business. There was a structure, basically called it the Old Barn, that had a lot of space that was underutilized. He had an employee at that time that needed some place to live, so he asked for approval to convert that barn to a residence. The planning development was approved to accommodate that mixture of uses on that site with the condition that basically it be limited to one apartment only, no expansion of the building could be undertaken to, you know, accommodate that residential use, and that if the property ever changed hands, that the, basically the zoning would revert back to the B-three commercial industrial type use. What has since happened is Mr. Vosberg has passed away, the property has changed hands, the new owner would like to continue the use of that property, as he's got Argold Dairy Systems, which is a similar use as far as the business. He would also like to continue the use of that barn as an apartment. When he purchased the property, he was not aware of that restriction that was not made known to him, so he made his purchase price basically contingent upon that income coming in from the rental unit, so he would like to continue that apartment use. He is not making any proposed changes otherwise to the structure, the uses, et cetera. It's just, the request is only to amend that previous restriction to allow him to continue that residential use, so it would eliminate the previous condition that it be only limited to that current owner. My preference is if you approve this, that you do not include a similar restriction on this owner, so we don't find ourselves back in this problem again. I would just recommend approval to amend the P U D to allow the apartment use to continue as is. Any questions?
To allow the apartment use just for this owner, right?
That would not be my condition. My condition is just to allow the apartment use to continue.
You want it to follow if the ownership changes, it would continue with the new owners, correct?
Correct.
And that was the vote of the Plan Commission?
Is it limited to a single apartment?
Yes, yes. I think that, that, that condition from before, I would suggest we carry forward. It's not allowed to expand or turn into a duplex or a multifamily building, it's one apartment.
And is the zoning in this really business zoning, industrial use?
Yeah, that was the original zoning for that property, and then the planning unit development was approved. Correct.
But it really, all the other uses in that area are non-residential, is that correct?
No, actually, the property right to the west is a single-family residence.
And that is owned by somebody else?
Correct.
So, the motion would need to...
I have a motion. I move that we approve the P U D amendment to allow the existing residential use to continue with no conditions attached as far as future property ownership.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote. Bonin? Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
No.
Stackhausen?
No.
Motion carries. Next is Library Block redevelopment feasibility study, that was in your packet for last time, and we are going to have Larry, if you'd like to introduce?
Yes, please. Give a little bit of a quick history here. The City Council hired Cindy Aggi, the City Council and the City Library Board worked together to hire Cindy Aggi of Economic Development Partners to do a feasibility study on the library redevelopment block, to determine whether or not it was feasible, and if it was feasible, then to also apply for a grant through the CDBG Public Facilities Program at the State of Wisconsin. What was handed out to you at your last meeting was the substantial feasibility study. At this point, it is hard to get into specifics, because we don't have all of the players identified yet who might be participating in the development, but this feasibility study certainly gives a great outlook, and it certainly helps the parties that are involved become more confident as to the results they can expect. With us today is Cindy Aggi from the Economic Development Partners, and Cindy, if you could come up. I know that the City Council would like a very brief review, and maybe if they have questions, now would be a great time.
Okay. I'm Cindy Aggi, last name is spelled J-A-G-G-I, address is 1972 Oakwood View Drive, Verona, Wisconsin, and I am the President of Economic Development Partners. As Larry mentioned, I was contracted by the Platteville Library Board to conduct the financial feasibility for the Platteville Library Block redevelopment, and it's considered to be, you know, a blighted area. And the feasibility was basically to look at, can we, in essence, raise the additional tax base needed that would support an expanded library? And when we say expanded, we're looking at about 22,000 square feet. And so the study has been completed, based on the financial assumptions that are outlined in the, in the study. And it did show that the, this project would, as defined, again, against the financial assumptions in here, would estimate, would generate an estimated $34,260,000 in additional tax base, which would be able to fully support the hard and operating costs of the library, and therefore would make the project, as it relates to the library, financially and economically feasible. So we are seeking approval for the study, so that we, in essence, can submit this now to the State of Wisconsin to close out the CDBG planning grant, and then this would allow us then to be able to take the next step, which is probably the most important step, which would be to apply and submit the CDBG Public Facility Grant in the amount of $500,000 to be able to be used as seed money for the library project. I am here, if you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I left my document home, I didn't realize it would be on agenda. Would the whole block be redeveloped? All the properties on the block between, it's bordered by, what, Main Street, Elm Street, Chestnut, and Pine? Or are there some properties omitted? Those next to Main, are they omitted, some of them on there?
Well, currently, as we looked at it through the financial feasibility study, the entire block would be redeveloped. However, the library would be the anchor on the block. The current clinic, neighborhood clinic, would also be a part of this redevelopment, but the rest of it would be, in, in the study, you would see that included in the feasibility study was some student housing. The proposal included some extended stay hotel stays for, potentially for faculty members visiting or, you know, teaching in the area, and then commercial and retail space as well. And that was all included in the financial feasibility.
My second question is, will a current library be completely removed? Is that what's going to happen?
Obviously, the developers will have their plan for how they would want to approach it. What we have discussed, and Carolyn, feel free to, you know, if you want to add anything, would be that the, the library, as it stands right now, would be, would be constructed in a different location, and then eventually moved from its current location into the new location. And there would be a transitional period of time, by which time, you know, the, the equipment and everything would be moved to the new location. Again, but staying on the block as the anchor. We really believe, and that comes across in, in our study, is that it's important to keep the library as the anchor on that block, for so many reasons. So we, we highly recommend leaving the library on that block.
Probably the reason for that is that way it would be more feasible, because if you move the library, people aren't going to go for this project anyway, okay?
Plus, the library also allows you, it gives you leverage for your financing, for the overall project.
With the grant you're talking about?
With the grant and other, other monies as well.
May I ask, where you, where the ideas came from of a medical clinic, which we have all that in this town already, okay? Now then, the other thing is, a motel there, possibility, where we have quite a bit of that already in this town, and we're dropping it at the top of Main Street? The other thing is, obviously, the student housing thing, that's probably the biggest idea, because that's what they would want, whether we would want, whether I would want it or not, is different. Just curious where the thoughts came from?
Sure, sure. There has been an advisory committee that is comprised of Carolyn Schuler with the, obviously with the Platteville Library, city manager, city planner, Dennis Cooley from the UW Platteville. In addition to that, Southwest CAP has been on there, they're, they're the ones that operate the, your current, it is a current neighborhood clinic that is on that block already, so it wasn't a new recommendation, it was in essence renovating that, that clinic. And there are also some engineers on the, the committee as well. So it's a comprehensive committee that's been meeting for over a year now, and it was a culmination of everybody's ideas, and everybody, I have to say, working with this group of people has been truly amazing. Everybody came in with a win-win attitude, everybody wanted this project to really work, and not at the expense of each other. So truly, everybody's been very supportive, and we believe that what we have in this feasibility study has a very good forecast for moving forward, and you have a lot of interest in this project.
Thank you. Do you have an idea of what we would be reducing from the tax rolls by taking those properties that you discussed off the tax roll? They give you any of that information?
As a result of the development, the tax roll would actually increase substantially.
It would increase with the new, but what we would be taking off to start with?
I thought it was like...
You're, you're asking the value of the block?
Correct.
A million?
A little over a million.
Million, two, I think.
And it's not that we're taking it and making it tax exempt, we would be building on that million, too. Some private developer would be doing that, it wouldn't be the city doing it. So it would remain taxable even through the construction. It would just be demolished and then rebuilt.
So what we're asking for is the approval of this study, so that we can submit it then to the state and close out that planning grant, which then would allow us to be able to go ahead and submit the grant for, for the CDBG Public Facility monies in the amount of $500,000 to be, to support the library. And we, I must caution you that we have a deadline of September 13th to submit that public facility grant. It's a new, it's a new, a rule from the, the Department of Administration where the, the grants have been shifted over to, so. And it's a one-time-a-year application process now. Used to be it was ongoing, and you can, you could submit the grant at any time, now it's a once-a-year application in a hard deadline of September 13th.
How long would it take before the $34 million tax base would be actually online? Be mainly after construction's done? Or is there some other...
Well, for the majority of this, that tax base would come into play in the first year to two years. The, and the financial feasibility says the one area that's going to take a little longer to build is your retail and commercial spaces. And we estimate that it, that'll take probably more like two to three years before that's all filled in, although there were developers that came in last week, and they felt that that, you know, maybe, we were maybe being too conservative there.
Where would you find, excuse me, go ahead.
Do you, did you take into account relocation costs?
Well, we did, and in fact, this, this CDBG Public Facility Grant will help with some of the demolition and possibly some of that relocation costs, but we did take that into consideration.
Where do you plan to get parking for this?
There's a whole section on parking here, but in essence, what we have in the study is the recommend, or is the estimate, I should say, based on the developer slash builder that was involved in the process. And so what you see in the study would be the most, it would be your worst-case scenario, let me put it that way. They're estimating a need for about 425 stalls, and there has been additional, you know...
So you're looking at taking a bunch of property in that area away and turning it into parking, is that correct?
Could I chime in here for a second?
Please.
The project would include a complete level of underground parking, that's over 180 or 200 stalls. We're also working on having a subgroup get together to talk about parking. Given the variety of different uses, there could be opportunities for overlap to occur. For example, the library closes at eight, and most people would arrive at a hotel or their, or their home after work in the evening hours, there may be an opportunity to overlap some of the parking. But to answer your question more completely, we don't know yet. We don't know what uses will be there, we don't know for sure what will happen.
You know where I'm headed, Larry, I'm looking at some properties, some businesses across the street that now you've put them, just added them to the blighted area, and these are incomes for people solely, they're sole incomes, and I wouldn't want to see anybody try to take care of that for parking.
Right.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Is $500,000 the maximum that can be applied for, or why?
Well, again, we have new rules and regulations, and it is the maximum at this time. So that's all we can apply for on that project.
And, and I'm assuming that your, your feasibility study is, is just that? It talks about this being feasible, but there could well be changes in terms of the type of space, the allocation of space between different uses and those kinds of things? So this just looked at one scenario?
This looked at, you know, the, all the different components?
Right, but in this particular...
And made certain assumptions, and based on those assumptions, that's what, what's in here. So that's correct. Based on the developer that would come in here, they may want to tweak this and change allocation of space, and then new financials would probably have to be run. So yes.
Is there a developer that's stepped forward already?
Well, there's interest.
There's, there are people that are interested.
And I'm assuming that that would be on a competitive basis, then?
Well, right now, whomever begins to pursue the development, this is, this is not something that the city is managing. It's still a private market.
Sure.
And if a developer wants to go forward and get options on all of the buildings, they're the ones that are going to be carrying the lead.
Carolyn, did you want to add anything?
No, Larry just answered that, too. As far as the library, too, I just wanted to make clear that it's called the library block, but we're not the only real entity, and that will be the anchor, but sometimes that gets garbled, and that the library block, everyone thinks, oh, it's the library only, but it's not, it's a real partnership. And with the other agencies, we have been working, and we've talked through a lot of different scenarios, so it's not that we haven't been thinking for a year and a half
Any other questions? We would need a motion regarding the library block redevelopment feasibility study.
I would move to accept.
I'll second.
I think Dick already did, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Jan?
Bonin? Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now onto information and discussion. Resolution making application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. This information's been in your packet, Larry, I guess if you just want to give a quick synopsis of that?
Certainly. The city, because we provide our own library services, we can exempt our taxpayers from paying the county's levy to pay for libraries. This is a routine resolution, we do this on an annual basis, and we are required to if we don't want to pay the county's tax.
Any question? All right. Item B, ordinance establishing Roundtree Gallery Board as part of the Platteville City Code. Larry?
Yep. The City of Platteville created the Roundtree Gallery via a resolution, and then recreated or amended that resolution via another resolution. It's, it's a little bit better, to put it mildly, I guess it's more important to have a board or a commission established via resolution, or via ordinance, and having an ordinance formalizes the entity more. And so what I've done is, I met with the gallery board, and they have recommended that we put it into an ordinance, and attached is the ordinance that they're recommending at my proposal.
Any questions?
Are there significant differences between this ordinance and the resolutions?
Uh, no, there is a change to one of the paragraphs in wording, but it is just grammatical. It's just a, an updated of the language.
All right. Item C is ordinance amending the official traffic map stop sign at intersection of Lilly and Pine Streets. Howard?
Yes. Currently, the intersection of Lilly and Pine is uncontrolled, there's no sign there. With the Broadway Reconstruction Project, there's been more traffic at that intersection, there have been a number of near-miss incidents. Under Wisconsin law, at an uncontrolled T-intersection like this, the, the vehicles on Lilly Street are supposed to yield to traffic on Pine Street, but unfortunately, that doesn't seem to happen sometimes. We have temporarily posted a stop sign, and this authority will expire when the construction is complete. We're asking for ordinance for permanent authority for this stop sign.
I think we have typographical error here. You have Broadway there, and it should say Lilly. I know it's just a mistake.
You're talking about the third paragraph on the fiscal note?
Yeah. You're right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that? Next, the ordinance creating Section 3606.7, establishing an economic development grant for reserve Class B liquor licenses?
Right, this is coming from the Licensing Committee. Under state statute, the city can issue as many as two reserve Class B liquor licenses. This would be, Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be basically a full bar, beer, wine, and mixed drinks that you could sell on-premise and then off-premise carryout liquor. At any rate, we've, the maximum number available under...
Our quota.
Our quota has been... Our quota has been reached, but you can do two reserve licenses. So the licensing committee has looked at this and we are proposing, and a reserve liquor license costs ten thousand dollars. The licensing committee, which includes Dick, Mike, and myself, is proposing that we offer an economic development grant of up to nine thousand dollars to a restaurant that applies for a reserve Class B liquor license. The Class B liquor licenses could go to bars and/or restaurants, but we're proposing an economic development grant of up to nine thousand if it's a restaurant and if improvements are made to that property after the issuance of this liquor license.
We have one person who is registered to speak, Jack Ludke.
My name is Jack Ludke, I'm the executive director for the Platteville Main Street Program. And I just would like to address the issue tonight on behalf of one of the constituents, particularly in the Main Street area. And that's the proprietor of Los Amigos Restaurant. He has, just to give you a perspective, been on a waiting list for a liquor license for his establishment for over five years. The city of Platteville is now, and Jan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, has twenty-three existing liquor licenses out there. They simply do not change hands. And he has invested in enlarging his restaurant and he is willing to do other investments into establishing the growth of his business. And he is ready to sign on to one of these reserve liquor licenses. And I would commend the council for considering the possibility of giving a economic development grant back because it is going to expand his availability of increasing his business. And it will also give him an opportunity to stay competitive in the marketplace as a small businessperson because right now he cannot serve the simplest drink in a Mexican restaurant, a margarita, without having a liquor license. And he loses business on a weekly basis to the other establishments that can. So I would encourage the council to consider this. He is ready, and this is just one case. It's raining in here. You do have consideration under the work thing to correct this issue?
Yeah, we're looking at City Hall, right? No, you know.
I know that's not holy water coming down anyway. But to, to consider making that a, a grant back because that is a pretty substantial fee to be paid for the liquor license. And he still will be quite, required on an annual basis to pay the normal licensing fee. So I, I thank you for your consideration of that effort.
Thank you. Any, anything else on this issue for anybody else?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Looking at your ordinance underneath A1, it says there, by providing economic incentives for new restaurants with liquor licenses. You're talking about an existing restaurant to get, to get this license. So is this a typo or something here underneath A?
No, I, I don't think it's a typo, I think it must be a typo.
This is not a new restaurant.
I think it was for a restaurant buying.
It says a new restaurant, this is not a new restaurant.
We had talked about this and we had decided that this restaurant did not previously have a liquor license, so it's a new restaurant with a, that would have a liquor license. I don't know if that's how it reads, but that was the intent.
That's right. It was new.
So we could have other restaurants that would be, if they decided to get the, the reserve liquor license and if they were issued it, they would be considered a, a new restaurant with a liquor license. So maybe we should try to find a little different, different wording for that.
In a sense, we, we knew about this when, because they inquired about it when we found out about this new ordinance from the state.
I think, I think we could just take out new and it'd just be.
Take out the word new.
Provide economic incentives for restaurants with liquor licenses.
And, but the construct, the, the economic development grant would only be available for new construction at a restaurant. So it's not like if somebody opened a restaurant and improved their restaurant and then three years later came for this liquor license, that they could produce bills from three years ago and say, now I want nine thousand back. It has to be new work on the restaurant as a result of getting this license.
And I think that's covered under number two, where it talks about that.
Was you saying that too, Jack, or?
And, and it does require copies of paid invoices and receipts evidencing and documenting the work.
So the license could go to new restaurants, completely new or existing?
It could go to existing.
Right.
But they have, no, it could go to new as well.
Right.
New or existing.
New or existing.
Who, okay. That's what I want to find out.
Any other questions or comments on that?
And one should know, it could go to a bar, too. They just would not be eligible for an economic grant back.
Right, they could purchase the liquor license for ten thousand dollars.
They could purchase the liquor license for ten thousand dollars and they would just have to give over the ten thousand dollars.
And it's a one-time ten thousand.
Right.
It's a one-time fee. And after that, they pay yearly, correct? Just the regular annual fee? Regular annual fee, right, okay.
And there's only two available, right?
Right. Right now, yes.
My next question. What if this restaurant goes out of business in two years? Do they have to repay any of the nine thousand dollars?
Not under this ordinance.
They don't have to?
Not as the ordinance is written.
The nine thousand's been reinvested in their business.
But if they go out of business, then it might become some other business.
Well, then the work is done for someone else.
Who then has to pay any, that goes in two months.
Next item is E, election cost sharing agreement with Grant County. Larry, I think that this is, or Jan, are you gonna?
I'd like to defer to Jan.
I can take care of this one. The, the county pays for all our ballots and programming costs for all federal and state elections. And they also do the programming for our local elections. And what this agreement states is exactly what the county is responsible for and what the city is responsible for. And we do this every two years for a new election cycle.
Okay, any questions on that? F is handbook amendment regarding employee residency requirements. Larry?
As a part of Wisconsin two thousand thirteen Act Number Twenty, the state of Wisconsin changed the regulations regarding what local governments are allowed to set for employee residency requirements. This is a resolution that incorporates the new changes or the proposal as well as a copy of the state statute and a copy of what our handbook says now. I know that this is going to require some discussion and that some council members may want to make changes. But I thought proposing a resolution would be a good way to get the ball or the conversation going. So if you have changes, I guess now is a good time to talk about it.
Since it's, right now it's being challenged, I understand. So therefore, the law is still in effect, it hasn't been changed. I don't think we should change our handbook at all, our handbook should stay the way it is. If the law is changed, then we change the handbook. But now the law is still in effect because Milwaukee, is it Milwaukee, I believe, that's challenging it?
Milwaukee is challenging it. They have decided to not follow the state law.
Right, so therefore, the law stays in effect because the law has not been changed.
Okay.
Okay, so then I think our handbook should stay the same, we should still have residency issue.
If the city council agrees and feels that way, then I, I would like some direction from the council not to enforce the new state's, state statute.
How do you want that?
An emotion?
A motion, okay, I'll make a motion.
This is the information.
You can't make a motion now, this is just for discussion. See, I'm in a hurry to do this one.
All right.
I just want to make sure I have direction so that if I do a new hire, I can explain exactly what the rules are.
I agree with his comments. I don't think we should change it until it's gone through the court.
Do we have current open positions?
We, we will shortly. The rec coordinator position is going to become vacant shortly.
Well, I have always not liked the residency requirement. I don't like the residency requirement for our boards and commissions either. Which is why we always have a lot of problem getting people to serve on our boards and commissions because they have to live within the city of Platteville. The reason, and the reason, too, I dislike the residency requirement is I feel that it limits the talent pool for a city in hiring. In today's world, we have a lot of husbands and wives both working outside the home. And I feel that making this a requirement for employment can really put a couple in a conundrum. The other spouse either has to leave their job in order to move here or have a really long commute. And kids, too, if they have kids involved, then their kids have to change school districts. I feel that this residency requirement is extremely archaic. So I would vote to approve it.
Anybody else have any comments on that issue? If you think of something you'd like to talk to Larry about it prior to the next council meeting, that would be fine.
Would you still like this on for action at the next meeting? Or do you want to discuss it further?
I don't see why we have to be in a hurry. I don't either. I think we should wait.
Information and discussion?
Looks like information and discussion one more time at least.
Okay.
My feelings would be the same as Patricia's.
Same with what?
As Patricia's.
Ah, okay. Next is the museum task force recommendations. And we had this on for information and discussion last time and added it again for information and discussion because that would give everyone a chance to read it over again. And we also had some folks who said they would like to comment on the report. And by the way, we would invite the public to weigh in on, on the task force recommendations. Larry, is this available online?
If it isn't, I'm sure it will be by tomorrow.
All right. So if you'd like to read the recommendations from the museum task force, please check platteville.org and take a look at that. And if you have comments you'd like to pass along to the council people, that would be appreciated. Does anybody on the council have anything they would like to say first? Otherwise, I do have three individuals who have asked to either talk or, or give us some information. All right. Eric Fatsinger.
Good evening, my name's Eric Fatsinger, twelve ninety-two Walnut Dell, Platteville. Since there wasn't any further discussion tonight, I'm not going to waste anybody's time with further discussion. I made my statement pretty clear last time about my feelings. But I have done some additional research based on the full packet becoming available that was available that, that night to the council members that wasn't available to everybody else to add some additional information and insight that I think is important for you to understand what the task force did and didn't do. If I could hand that out to the members, if that's okay? Thank you.
Okay. Marilyn Gachak?
Marilyn Gachak, two thirty-five Virgin Avenue. And I should probably acknowledge that I have just been appointed to the museum board. I'll be brief. The museum task force has accomplished the musician, the mission that it was assigned. I think that that report reflects a lot of time and effort on the part of the people who participated. So that should be acknowledged. However, the museum is a very unique part of our city's history, our city's culture. And a primary objective of the museum has always been education. I think that, well, our citizens should be very proud of the fact that part of their tax money is going in support of this very unique and very complicated operation up there on the hill. I believe the museum should remain as part of the city budget and not be privatized to depend on grants, donations, and other very problematic sources of funding. So I am hoping that as you think about the recommendations of the task force, that you take into consideration the complexity of running that facility, the problems that are going to occur if you start to implement the suggestions that the task force has given you. And I would hope that just putting this task force report up on your website, I do not consider that an adequate attempt at involving the public, the citizens of Platteville, in this decision. So I hope you would think about somehow doing something else to involve them if you intend to go ahead with this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Cooley?
My name is Dennis Cooley, I reside at one fifteen East Knollwood Way, Platteville. And I was a member of the task force that was asked by the city manager back in late two thousand and twelve to convene for the following reasons. There are three things that we were asked to consider. Number one, assuming the city of Platteville continues to cut back on funding for the mining museum, how can operations of the mining museum continue? That was one of the questions we, we debated over the course of, of our time. Number two, assuming the city of Platteville continues to cut back on funding for the mining museum, what process could be followed to ensure that service continues with minimal interruption for future generations? And number three, please put together a, a plan to guide a transition that moves the museum from a city expense to a budget-neutral position or a separate entity. So the reason, you're, we followed the, the recommendations, we, those of us who agreed to be on the task force, and Mr. Fatsinger's here, he was on the task force at, at the beginning. And as he mentioned, that is, at last time he was here, he did leave our group after one or two meetings. So the issue, we, we continue to meet, we continue to move forward. And we, we went over, under a, a couple of different things. We realized the city's been, been supporting the GMA for thirty-three years since nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty. In two thousand and twelve, the operation of the, of the, of the area there was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for staffing and thirty-five thousand dollars for operations. So about eighty-six percent of the budget for the, the museum, mining museum, was for staffing. So we knew it was very staff-heavy. The concern I had is a person who's worked with numerous nonprofits in our area over the last fifteen years, and I'll just give you a list of the ones I've worked with. I oversee the U W Platteville Foundation, we work with the Alumni Association at the university, which is a nonprofit. Now we have a separate real estate foundation, five-one C three. I'm on the board of the Batosi Brewery Foundation, I'm in the board of, and director, or the president of Platteville Sports Boosters. We set up Platteville Youth Basketball and LLC, or a nonprofit, rather, five-one C three. I work with the Platteville Community Arbitum in their funding areas. Platteville Youth Basketball, Platteville Power Soccer Club, Kiwanis, Platteville Music Boosters, Platteville Youth Football. Also helped the Chamber with its revenue plan that they implemented a couple of years ago that was very successful in generating new memberships and, and putting together a package there. I also advise the Community Leadership Alliance and I work with other nonprofits in the area. So this is an area that, I just want to tell you, the one common denominator of all nonprofits that are flourishing is that they have an eye and, and a focus on revenue generation. And in the last year, in two thousand and twelve, and this is what we're looking at as a task force, in two thousand and twelve, the total revenue generated against that two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar budget was twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars in admission and ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars in all other revenue, including donations. And two-thirds of that, or, excuse me, three-quarters of that was from the historic encampment. So there's expenses that offset that extra revenue. So our issue is, as the city is facing a number of very tough decisions as we move forward, especially, you know, we know the, some of the outcry in the community based on, you know, cutting people's hours and whatnot. We were trying to find a solution that gave the museum group some time, and in this case, several years, to hopefully go from a budget that is mainly supported by the city to one that has a blending of city resources and other financing. And again, the number one thing I can tell you about other nonprofits, somebody in the group has to be focused on revenue creation. Okay? So the issue is if you don't have the revenue coming in, and we looked at the winter months, very, very little money comes into the museum in the winter. And other museums close during the winter when that occurs. Our stays open, we have full-time employees. So the issue is, we don't want to make the decision on how to manage the area, but somebody needs to be focused on grants, other revenue creation. Whether, you know, so, museum board met. Our goal, again, just so the entire public knows, that we would have the city portion of the museum operating budget remain at $250,000 for the year 2014. So that's next year. Give everybody a year to get their funding plan in line. And again, it's not meant to be 100% financed. I know the request was for us to have a revenue-neutral position. The committee never got that far. As a person at the university who understands the value of our mining program, you know, part of our history at UW Platteville, we also use that mining museum several times a year to bring people in, especially our mining engineers who have a strong passion for that group. So I can't, I'm going to tell you that personally, I think the museum is a gem for Platteville, and it's something we need to look at preserving. But if we don't have an eye on revenue generation, it isn't going to matter at some point in time here. Okay? So the idea is that something has to change. And I don't know of any other nonprofit that's flourishing at all in southwest Wisconsin that doesn't have a dedicated fundraiser. But we don't. So the issue, I looked at last year, there were no donations that were in that listing of other revenue. Okay, again, the encampment was the big one. So coming back to what the committee or the task force talked about, we discussed trying to streamline the operation a little bit and trying to refocus it to be more revenue-sensitive. But $250,000 for year 2014, which is, I think, the city funds in 2013 at that same amount, so there's no cut for that year. Then going forward, starting in 2015, January 1st, 2015, implement grant funding to help support the museum operations. We suggest doing this in steps. Years 2015 and 16, $175,000. Year 2017, $150,000, and so on, until we get to year 2019 and thereafter, $100,000 of city revenue that would go into this project. So we're not a revenue-neutral position, we couldn't find that. We thought that would be detrimental to the museum. We visited, went to Mount Horeb as a group, we did a number of visits, trying to figure out a solution. And again, we fell short of the idea of having a revenue-neutral position here. One of the options we recommend to the group to consider is increasing the room tax rate by 1%, but in order to make it more of a tourist draw, but as you can tell by the admissions to the museum, we're falling a little short in that area. So we need to revamp the marketing of the museum. There are a number of volunteers in the community we think that could be utilized in that area. Again, I just want to make sure you know, the task force never at one time thought about ever shutting this down. We want to figure out how to keep it going and make it flourish in the future. Okay, so you've got the rest of, there are seven total recommendations there. Our thought was that if it was streamlined into one group and refocused, that would be, we've been dealing with these issues for a long time. We had two members of the group that were long-term board members with the JMA. So just the difficulty of getting people to understand, you know, how we can move this forward, I just don't think we can stay, as part of that committee, as a task force, stay the course we are right now and have any success as we move forward, especially with the city spacing and its budget situation. So I'm willing to answer any questions you might have. Yep?
About endowments, do you see any museums that have significant endowment?
Yeah, we also saw a number of museums that have friends of the museum and are active, I mean, might be giving programs that are very small to start. But the idea is that hopefully over time, I mean, the grant writing is very difficult, and Mr. Fatsinger was absolutely right on the mark. I mean, grants are very difficult to come by for this group. Right? But one thing that happened in Mount Horeb, maybe out of necessity, if they wanted to have their museum in Mount Horeb, they had to do it with volunteers. They'd do a lot of their work with volunteers. So the issue, somebody in the staff has to have an eye on revenue generation. Because it isn't generating enough revenue to support even one of the positions. Okay? Did that answer your question? Sorry, Ken. Did I answer it?
Well, my question was, could enough endowment be gotten to fund museum long-term?
If this group was dedicated to endowment creation? I think so. I mean, that's, I think the only course that is a permanent, endowment means forever. I think it's a permanent.
You just can't have two good years of raising money and then
Right.
after that, you don't have enough money.
Right. I agree. And I think, I mean, even if the numbers aren't correct, if you want to adjust that all you want to, somewhere along the line, you have to maybe, somebody has to generate something to help offset what the city's been putting in. I'm going to tell you, if it was, the museum task force also said that if there was a large number of people that were accessing that, the museum at all times of the year, then we would be the first ones to understand, you know, but that would show up in the admission for the structure. The honest-to-God truth is, there aren't a lot of folks that use that in the winter. And the cuts would not, I mean, but it's a tough thing when we're talking about cutting people. Very difficult.
Other questions? Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
This is not something we have to have a decision tonight.
No, this is information and discussion, but we wanted to have other folks that have the opportunity that maybe didn't have the opportunity at the last meeting. Yeah, this is something we need to talk about, and obviously with budget coming up.
Because I do have questions, but I don't want to start tonight.
Right, that's fine. We can bring this up again. Okay.
I want to thank Mr. Cooley for giving his presentation as part of the task force. Because when I met with the board, yeah, the museum board, I don't believe there was somebody there from the task force. Was there? No. So we reviewed the material, but I don't think there was somebody there to represent it. So I thank you.
If you come to the microphone, I'll give you one more quick comment. You have to come to the microphone, because we need, to the microphone, please. Sorry, we have to record it, Marilyn, so.
When we are discussing the museum, I'm just asking that people not think in terms of, or use the term museum and JMA interchangeably. They're not the same.
Next item is resolution to submit a grant application to the EDA for the purpose of obtaining the initial funds to establish an innovation center for the city of Platteville, in the city of Platteville, not for, in the city of Platteville. Larry, can you bring us up to date on the discussion?
You bet. The city of Platteville and our economic development partners have all been meeting and discussing the idea of the innovation center. I believe Chancellor Shields is here tonight to answer any questions and to discuss the resolution with you. The group has put together the resolution with the intent of writing a grant in partnership with the university to help support the funding of an innovation center. And we would contract with Southwest Regional Planning Commission to do the grant paperwork. I believe the contract would be split, half the university, half the city. But this is, this is an even greater step in that we're forming a partnership to pursue the innovation center and formalizing that via a resolution and a grant application process. Having said all that, Chancellor Shields, if you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you.
Dennis Shields, 895 West Main Street. I come also in my capacity as chancellor of the University of Wisconsin Platteville. It has been my hope that we could move forward in collaboration with a number of different partners, including the city, the various economic development entities, and hopefully soon, the business community, to develop an innovation center which would serve as a catalyst for economic development in this area. I am in favor of this resolution. The university has agreed to fund part of the grant writing for this. I believe the city, unless I'm mistaken, has agreed to fund a part of it. It is my sincere hope that some of our other partners step up and find a way to help support us financially, support this effort if it is going to be a community endeavor. But this is the first step on that pathway, and we're working hard at the university to do our part to use our intellectual capital to help populate this innovation center when it comes into fruition, if and when. So.
Sir, I have a question.
Sure.
Please help me. This is my ignorance, okay? The innovation center, exactly what type of school is this?
It's not a school.
It's not a school. Okay, I thought it was a classroom tool of some kind, working.
Well,
Please help me.
What, the university's piece of it would be using our faculty that have an entrepreneurial bent, that have products that they're creating, entrepreneurial activities by our students, attracting companies that want to work with our faculty to, but need space, and that kind of thing. For example, one of the challenges that many of the entrepreneurs that are interested in working with our faculty is that if they, even if they have the money to buy equipment, the state procurement process delays that from six months to a year. This would be a vehicle to cause that to happen. You have to be fairly nimble. We'd have flexible space in this building that could be used to do that kind of thing. I want to be real careful because this is a collaborative venture, and there might be a number of things that might go on in there. For example, we have a cost-recovery entities on campus. We have a shortage of space on campus. We may be able to serve as tenants for office space in this. But this is very early stages of that process. As we've talked with our various partners, we've been looking to clarify exactly what the roles are. Like, the assumption by many of the people in the economic development side of this is that the university would be buying or purchasing or securing the land. Well, quite honestly, the university doesn't have the capacity to do that. Now, we can find partners that might be willing to help work with us to develop this, but we don't have $200,000, half a million dollars, a million dollars to acquire land. The other presupposition is that we pick the site. We haven't picked the site. That's something we have to do collectively. This grant application is like one more step along the route of creating that sort of collaborative environment, working with the city, economic development, the university, and the business community in making this happen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
For writing the grant, I assume you'll have a budget. So will the council get information on this budget?
I believe what the proposal we received is $7,000.
Yes, but I'm talking about to run the center.
Oh, we're much too early in the process to decide exactly how it's going to be run.
You're going to ask for a grant, I assume you have to give some numbers.
For,
For getting the grant.
Well, this is a planning grant to develop the thing. This is, you know, this is in its infancy. It would be wrong for this council to believe that there is a well-thought-out, well-developed, that's the whole point of this grant, unless I'm mistaken. Right?
Well, the first paragraph talks about a feasibility study.
Well, feasibility study's already been done, I believe.
So this, you would call what?
This is a planning grant.
Planning grant.
Right. The feasibility study is what we're working from in developing the planning grant. And I'm a little uncomfortable, okay? Because I'm not the leader of this enterprise, all right? I mean, every step along the way, and this is part of my frustration with this process, every step along the way, people assume the university is the lead person in this. I view this as a community-based effort.
Well, I do too, but I'm just asking the question, is there going to be a budget?
Ken, Ken?
If you're going to plan something, you have to plan something with numbers.
Plan for the grant? I'm not, I guess I'm not, for the whole operation?
Writing the grant.
Right. They come forward, there's an entity, somebody else decided this. They decided who they wanted to have write the grant. They asked the university to help in funding it. I've sort of said, okay, we'll cover half the cost of writing that grant. I think the grants, the grant writing fee is $7,000. So the university's ponying up $3,500 to that for the grant. I'm assuming the city is on the hook for the other half of it.
Question?
Barb actually had her.
Ken, I would point out that the feasibility study for the innovation center is something the chancellor came and talked about.
A year ago.
I don't know. And that we have, we actually have a document. I'm assuming that this grant application is based on information that has been presented previously in that document.
Yeah, at least in part.
Yeah.
So then the money, if we receive a grant, that money will be used to pay for bringing people into plan how this should go about, is that correct? Is that more of the expenditure money?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, just if you want to come up to the microphone. We need to clarify that because the memo says to help fund the construction of an innovation center.
The, yeah, okay.
If you would introduce yourself, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Robert Jackson. I'm a consultant for Chancellor Shields and for the university. And specifically, it is for construction, but part of it also is planning. And the construction will require some planning, as you mentioned, for the next steps, for the budgets and things like that. This provides the kind of the momentum and the focus so that we can continue the planning that we've been doing now for about a year and a half. Did it answer your question?
Thank you.
Any other question?
Robert, or chancellor, whichever. When we talk about this grant application, I'm not talking about the cost of a grant writer. What kind of a money ask would we make to EDA? I mean, we're not talking about making $500,000 ask.
No, no. We're asking for up to $3 million. And there'll be some requirement for matching that we have to come up with. So essentially, the grant will be somewhere around $6 to $7 million. The grant total prospect, $3 million would come from EDA.
So it's not like the earlier thing that we talked about, to a CDBG grant for half a million? So this amount of money would go a long way toward construction, a $7 million grant.
You're absolutely right.
With three and a half.
Yes, you're absolutely right. That's correct.
With the total of the $7 million, would that be total grant, or would there be so much for the grant and so much for matching funds?
No, the grant is $3 million, and then the matching funds would become, and so we're in the process now of identifying where we can get that. That can be in kind, it can be property, it can be a number of different variables. And Larry Burkey has been sitting as a part of the advisement, advisor committee. And we're, you know, we're coming around some numbers now. We're getting closer to some numbers.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Not on that, but can I assume then this is the gentleman taking the place of the gentleman that used to talk to us at our meeting and then moved on?
Mr. Gay probably is talking about.
That's not exactly right. No, the position of Mr. Gayfield is still vacant. And the university is in the process of rethinking its internal approach to managing our piece of it. So sometime in the next four to six weeks, we'll make a decision about that, have somebody else in place, maybe with a slightly different role. Okay? Mr. Jackson is a consultant that in place, maybe with a slightly different role, okay? Mr. Jackson is a consultant that we've brought on board to help us internally think about this and to serve as our lead on, on this process for, for the time being.
Any other questions? Thank you. We have one other person?
I, I don't have a question specifically on the grant. I do have a question. It is on the accounting, the budget part of that. And so when that becomes appropriate, because at this point in time, there's a request to take the amount of money that the city would spend for the grant writing from fund balance, I'm wondering if it can't more appropriately be taken from either the money that was left over from the finance director, or there was other money, I can't quite remember. I will look at that, though, but rather than to take this from fund balance, I believe we should probably clean up some of, some of these other areas.
That's a good suggestion. I think I'll look at that as well. Get back to you at your next meeting.
We do have one other person who has to speak on innovation center, Michael Mayo.
Michael Mayo, 375 South, just down here in Platteville. When I was present when this proposal for this innovation center was originally brought to the councils and the work session, we were, was discussed at the council meeting. What really bothers me about this innovation center is the fact that in the original concept, and I haven't heard anything that dispels that so far, is that the city will be on the hook for some twenty million dollars for the cost of this innovation center. Well, I don't know about you, that's a pretty big number. And the original plan also calls for that if anything comes out of this innovation center, any new technology, any new inventions, any new patents, that the city gets zero dollars from it. And the university has total control of it. I don't understand how the city council can sit here and even think about a program that yields zero to the city of Platteville, to the residents of Platteville, and to put the residents on the hook for twenty million dollars. That's your decision. I sure hope, I pray to God that you're going to go ahead and make the right one, because I don't want to be held responsible for the university's tab of twenty million dollars, or even a part thereof, when we get zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. The study, the feasibility study is online, if anyone would like to read it, and I don't believe the twenty million is in there, but I could be wrong. I'll check that myself. Then, the next item then on the agenda would be related to the EDA grant application, and it would be agreement between Southwest Regional Planning Commission and the city of Platteville for the innovation center grant application, because we would have a grant writer do the actual grant.
So what are you asking for?
I'm sorry?
What are you asking for right now?
Well, this is, again, just information and discussion, but the next item is the, it's in your packet. It shows an agreement-
Right.
Proposed agreement between Southwest Regional Planning and the city.
To-
To hire Southwest Regional Planning to actually write the EDA grant.
The first one is a resolution with the university. The second one is actually hiring the consultant to write the grant.
Right. And it states in there that the city, that the work would not exceed seventy-five hundred dollars, and that the city would pay the thirty-five, twenty-five, or whatever, half of it anyway. It would be half by the university and half by the city.
Actually, that's not stated in the agreement.
It's, it's not stated in that agreement, but I think it's in-
It's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, yes.
So it is, it is clarified.
So you need a motion on the agreement and the resolution?
Next time, we would need a, because this is just information and discussion, so we can't vote tonight, but when we bring this back next council meeting, we would first be looking at the resolution to submit the grant to the EDA, and then we would be looking at the agreement that says that we would use Southwest Regional Planning to actually write the grant. Because there's a long involved application that needs to be done.
I'm sorry, I get confused between the two options.
Well, yeah, and they are interrelated, so, but there are two separate items that would have to be acted on. Any other questions?
I, I do, I do have one other question, and that is, I'm assuming that the grant would then be public information?
Whatever's submitted in the grant, yes.
And so the council would see that prior to it's being, yeah.
So, yeah.
Do we, I should ask the chancellor, do we have a timeline on this grant?
I can address that. The grant application is due in January of 2014, but there are a lot of steps that have to be, take place as part of the application process. So the sooner we get moving on this, the more likely it is that we'll have a successful and full application in January. So to answer your question, yes?
Yes.
January 2014.
I like that. Deadlines are my bag.
Okay.
As Larry said, there are a lot of steps that, and not in, you know, the actual verbiage, but actual physical steps that need to be taken in order to have the grant. So, you know, once land is identified, for example, some engineering costs and things like that have to be done and submitted as part of the grant. So, the grant application. So that's why the lead time.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is UW Platteville parking agreement. Larry, you want to-
Sure, I'll give some brief history.
Yeah, it was in our packet.
In 2012, the city of Platteville agreed to permit parking on certain city streets near the UW campus, as seen in Exhibit 1. So if you turn to the map, they're highlighted in yellow, I believe. This, by, by working together with the university, the city generated a payment of twenty thousand dollars for this agreement. Plus, we're also receiving half of the parking citation revenue for citations issued on the yellow area of the map. This agreement was initially done for a one-year period to serve as a test or a pilot program. In the fall of 2002, the, the city did receive the funds, and in August of 2013, we will receive approximately three thousand dollars in citation revenue. Attached to your task for this evening is a continuation of this agreement. As I mentioned, the first one was a pilot. This one is more of a three-year, more formal relationship. And so this would establish this revenue stream for the city of Platteville that can be relied on in years 2013, 14, and 15.
Any questions?
Larry, from looking at this map, there basically are no residential areas involved, are there?
Not single family, right.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's interior streets to the university area.
Okay, so it really didn't affect anybody along, other than that way. Thank you.
I do have a, two questions. Number one, is there a reason that the streets are not identified by name in the resolution, or in the agreement?
In the agreement, it references Exhibit 1, so Exhibit 1 would become part of the agreement.
I understand that, but sometimes people may have trouble. Second of all, in terms of College Drive, does it, doesn't it go a little farther down College Drive and-
This was Exhibit 1 that was in the initial agreement. If you'd like, we can change it. I can work with the university.
I actually think it goes all the way to Sunset.
Okay.
I think on this exhibit, it stops at what appears to be the boundary of the university, which is by university, what are those apartments called? But I actually think that the enforcement goes all the way to Sunset Drive.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that right, Howard?
As far as I know, that's, it went to Sunset Drive, yes.
So this, this, this map is not, I mean-
This is Exhibit 1 from the first year's agreement.
Okay.
If the, if it has been changed as it's been practiced, we could reflect that in this new agreement.
I, I think that, and Howard, I think that our, our motion last time was to make it the same as we have for the snow park, or the-
Emergency, snow emergency for parking.
And that goes to Sunset. And I think if you look back in the motion, that's what it was. So the, the exhibit may have been wrong the last time. But I, I'm almost positive it goes all the way to Sunset.
Is there parking on both sides of that street? So, do you just give a notification to people that park there when we have snow issues?
The university does.
Okay. Do you tell them when it's an issue, or they just choose?
That's, the university is responsible for plowing College Drive from Sunset Drive to Greenwood Avenue and, Greenwood Avenue and University Plaza.
They plow what we have in yellow here?
They plow those. There, there's a separate agreement regarding that. And under that agreement, the university is responsible for notifying people when there's a snow emergency, and at that point, they go to alternate side parking for the duration of the emergency in order to plow those streets.
And then you said they, they plow them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What happens to College Drive then? Does the city automatically do alternate side parking there during the winter months?
There's, I need to review it, but from Sunset Drive to Main Street, there's very little parking. There's three or four parking stalls, and, and we just manage that as alternate side parking, as far as I, as far as I can recall. But the city plows from Main Street to Sunset Drive, and the university from Sunset Drive south to Greenwood Avenue.
Any other questions about that, or comments? All right, we have finished the information and discussion portion of the meeting and are going into a work session, so the cameras will be off at this point. And we'll be discussing at the work session, UW Platteville quarterly update, city hall remodeling, draft 2014 capital improvement plan. Thank you all, and we'll take a five-minute break.